Good evening. The notice requirements provided for in the Open Public Meetings Act have been satisfied. Notice that this meeting was properly given by transmission to the Asbury Park Press and the Two River Times, and by posting at the Borough of Highlands Municipal Building, and filing with Borough Clerk all on April 30th, 2024. Items listed on this agenda are subject to change. No formal action will be taken. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag, a nice face of America, and to the Republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I will now do roll call. Councilmember Sabantes. Councilmember Chalak.
Here.
Councilwoman Melnick.
Here.
Council President Olszewski.
Here.
Mayor Bruhlon.
Here.
Thank you. So the first and only item for discussion is the U.S. Army Corps of Engineer Floodwall Project Updated Plans Public Information Meeting.
Okay, it's been, I know it seems like a blink of an eye, but it's been seven years since the Army Corps was last here in 2017. We did have an update in 2020, but it wasn't a big formal meeting such as this one. There are people that don't know about this project. If you haven't already, I would pick up this little fact sheet. It gives you a whole history. The Corps has been studying Highlands and this project since 1990. So we have our 34 years in the making to get to this point where we are nearly finished with, well, we are not, they are, nearly finished with, with design. So from time to time, I like to have these meetings to get public input. So before every, all the design elements are, are worked out that we can engage with the public and get your opinions. It's your town, it's my town, our town, that we should all be involved in this decision-making process, and that's why we are here this evening. I think it might be best if we can start over at the end. Rob, if you could introduce yourself and, and where you work with, which entity, and what your position is.
Sure. Hi, everyone.
Still can't hear?
Testing, testing.
Okay. Lean into the mic and put it all the way up.
Testing, hello. I think we're good now. Hi, everyone. My name is Rob Von Breel. I'm with the NJDEP Office of Coastal Engineering. Our office serves as the non-federal sponsor to, to this project with the Army Corps of Engineers. Is Kelly Stefieri, she's a bureau chief with our office. And to the right of her, Dennis Reinect, he's the director for our office. And then I think we should hand it to the Corps.
Hi, I'm Bethany McLennahan. I am the project manager with the Army Corps of Engineers. I'm also a resident of Atlantic Highlands, so I may know some of you here, but if I don't, I'm just a frequent resident or participant of Highlands restaurants and everything, too. I'm going to let my staff introduce themselves as well.
Good evening. Jason Shea, Corps of Engineers. I'm a civil engineer, and I was the planner on this project in the recent years post Sandy.
Erin O'Donnell, I work for the Corps, and I'm the technical manager, civil engineer.
Ariana Stimple Fernandez, I'm the project archaeologist, part of the environmental branch. Ariana Stimple Fernandez, I'm the project archaeologist and part of the environmental branch.
Oh, me? Oh, I'm Karen Chalak. I live on Washington Avenue, and I'm on the council here.
Carolyn Breyon, your mayor, and I live on Miller.
Joanne Olszewski, the president of the council, and I live on Grantour.
Don Melnick, councilman, live in Twin Lake Houses.
Brian Shabarak, I'm the municipal attorney for the Borough of Highlands.
Bethany, if you'd like to kick us off?
Hello? Can everybody hear me?
No.
No?
Not really.
No microphone, is there?
There's none.
Hello?
There you go.
There you go. So thank you all for coming up tonight. This is a presentation on where we are in the project on the Army Corps side. So this is public information meeting. We are going to take some comments towards the end, but. All right, so thank you again. Sorry for this confusion on the mics. So the purpose of today's meeting, if you guys can all read this, but we're going to discuss the pre-construction engineering design phase, and that's the phase we're currently getting for the project right now. From construction, so data gathering, and design. The project, and you all know that is a local source, that you have community, there is infrastructure, community, welfare, and your community. And speaking of questions to the end, if you might answer them as you go through the presentation. So I perused your Highlands website, and I saw this was a great picture. This is the old Highlands, the old Bridgeville over, as we all well know. And then the bottom right here makes pretty few bars. You can see how, how low it is and how light it was. So it's always been a waterlogged community, even before all the development. But I just thought these pictures were really interesting. So your Highlands partnership is the Army Corps of Engineers in New York District, the non-federal sponsor of New York Community DEP, and your project stakeholder is the federal partner in New York, if you're staying with us. So our agenda loosely today, the New York DEP is going to present some of their information. We're going to go through the project authority, what this project is under, project area, objectives, what alternatives were considered back from the feasibility report, what the recommended plan is, some draft renderings for to visually see what we are proposing for better and apart in South Harbor Old. And then the current project update. Dennis or Rob?
Ben. Also, as I said earlier, the DEP certainly not very responsible to the projects that fall under the state of Jersey government bill or maybe the county government, the county government, kind of way. Our office also within the DEP fall under the vision of the lead engineering and construction with that's right there as our director. So our, our office is funded through the short protection funds. It's, let's say, a $25 million annual duration, and it's funded through the city transfer tax to use to fund short protection projects throughout the state, and also meets non-federal law shares on Army Corps projects. So as I said, we are the non-federal sponsor on a lot of the Army Corps projects throughout the state that you're, they're with mainly beach fields, but also a lot of political projects, such as the levee flood wall beach project in New Beach that currently under construction, the Simpler project in Fort Mon, and then as I said, a lot of the beach restoration projects throughout the state on Grand Bay, as well as the Atlantic. And we also use the, the funded, the fund projects at the state level. Those, those are ranging from bulkheads to jetty, to drawings, sea walls, that sort of. And also within our $25 million annual preparation, some of that goes towards Stevens and Technology for various research efforts for short protection. And then also we give some of it to Stockholm for survey analysis to monitor our beach project throughout the state, as well as certain funding going to the Department of Division, as well as the Land Service. So as the non-federal sponsor, we are a co-venture partner with the Army Corps of Engineers. This project is funded 65% federal, 30% non-federal, and 75% of that, 35% portion for construction. Or we, we fund it through each state. As far as our, our, our overall role goes, we are also tasked with acquiring real estate for the project, to the point, as well as having professional assistance with the state So once we get to project implementation, we will be, obviously, extraterrestrial data, everything between the state and the borough. That, that process comes after we, as the state's co-technical sponsor, assign project funding agreement with Army Corps of Engineers. As I said, after that's all, after all those, uh, uh, very translocated, we put the real estate acquisition. We've worked with the Corps to finalize the land specifications, and then the Corps subsequently advertised various contracts for the construction process. And at the end of the construction phase, once the, uh, the, uh, construction is complete and operating, we make it. And now, and that will report to the DEP later.
Thank you. So the Army Corps has directed our Congress to implement the project through the feasibility stage and through construction. So you guys can read this, this is just some of the legislative authority that has been hired throughout the year to oversee the project and to have this currently going to the PET study right now. So the PET study is currently 100% federally funded. Once we get finished with this PET phase, it is pre-construction engineering design, that will go into caution, uh, the year's campaign. So this, the study location, you all know where you live. The blue here on the right, that's the project area, so basically everything from shore drive to the water. So why are we here? Flooding date back to the early 1900s, and it doesn't just flood on my slather because in ice and water, so that's why we're here. Recently, February 2024, March 2024, flooding again. So that's, that's why we're here. In 1919, had a big nor'easter that transformed the town, and again, in Superstorm Sandy 2012, 20 years later, it transformed the town. And that really kicked off the Army Corps' involvement with the environmental authorities to implement the project and to study with it. So the problem again, you know, we're here because of the flooding. We have a history of devastating water damages due to not just storm surge, but also rain events. Hurricane Ida wasn't a cold, cold storm. Well, it was a cold storm, but it was a very, 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 uh, which, you know, the Highlands swept down, the backyards, and it had flooding in the rootways. As you can see here, all the lower part of Highlands flooded. The orange, greater than 6 feet above ground, if they were 6 to 9 feet above ground, it flooded in that orange. The yellow was 3 to 16 above ground. And then you have copies in the red, which are 9 feet plus, which I know a lot of you have experienced during Sandy. So our project objectives, reduce the damages. We're not going to completely hang away in our water. That's kind of impossible, but we can reduce the damage there, reduce the life safety. We don't want anybody to get hurt, die. That's a big part of, that's a big problem during rain events or snow events. And support can be resigned. You guys are part of the Bay Shore community. It's very key for, for, um, the, the, we all have projects going on. Some are in construction right now. That's part of the community resiliency, keeping that Bay Shore character alive. What's going to happen in Highlands without the future project? The long history of damage will continue. This is an iconic photo. Do you see, we have upper Highlands, we have lower Highlands. Fortunately, both Highlands will have damage occur. Without project implementation, you're still going to see the flooding. And then we'll see globalize, storm intensity, storm increasing, it's looking at. Previous public meetings, you've been on this board many years ago, as the mayor has said, we heard you, you want maintenance work and access, very important, as somebody who uses your beaches, important. And what will the project look like? You have a lot of residences on the water. How is this going to impact you? What is this going to look like? So we hear you, and we understand. So we're going to try to answer those questions and try to make people comfortable. During the feasibility stage, phase of the project, which is a report online, we looked at several all kinds of, that we considered non-structural, I have home elevation, three walls, flood roofing, brave here, equipment up, or hard structural measures, seawall, bulkheads, optional closure structures, navigation secondary beats, and flood walls. The seawalls are basically a combination of levees, restructures, bulkheads, but mainly they flow down to the beachfront. Flood walls are a wall, it can be any type of underground, either from three feet above, and it's a wall, usually concrete. So these are all considered during the feasibility phase. And then the recommended plan is what was authorized. So from here, the outer line is a nine and two type flood wall line. You have pump stations, we're going to try to address the flooding that comes down from the water which area. You have a detention pond up on the left-hand corner there, and pressure type hold for that, the rain flooding as well. And then the bottom right-hand corner, there's a floodgate that will go over the roadway on May Avenue, which is connected to a underground. All this is connected to high ground. So the next few lines from the renderings that we've done for Better Park and South Harbor, again, these are just renderings for track. We don't have enough information to actively pick what's going on. Currently in data gathering phase, which is a practical information, height of the ground is, so these are just some ideas of what it could look like. So this is Better Park, we all know it well. And looking at the line for Better's Park, that red line is the long, common sewer line. We have to stay away from it. So the flood wall that was in the previous feasibility study went right into an arena there. We can't add it there due to our foundation for the flood wall and leaves a sewer line. We can't leave the sewer line. So that's one of the complications we have since this year. So in looking at that, keeping away from the sewer line, we look at, you can see the gray line, which is outside of the park. So the park itself is not within the flood wall, it's just to the outside. Again, the alignment is just a draft. It could change depending on the survey's cost. So you'll have two openings to get into the park, and you use roller gates, the roller gate structure that goes across May Avenue there, and that'll tie into shore drive and up in the park. So again, this is just an idea. This is the street view, so you can see from the street. The middle parts are elevated. The beginning will have openings down to the park, those will remain open 90, 90 cents a time, so they will all be closed during, during storm event. We'll get into the operations and maintenance later. Another option of that is pulling the wall to community park, which is in the floodgate structure, or flood wall structure. This presentation will be online as well, so I see you all taking photos, it'll be online. So we pulled it back, again, keeping away from the sewer line. This does impact the basketball courts and the playground feature, but then it does keep the park within the flood wall, out of the. Again, you'll have those like the structure from left-hand, along the May Avenue, break from the tunnel. This is the street view. Or in the park view, you can see the flood wall there up the ground. Uh, this is another option, there's four broadway. The one thing bad about this option, on the bottom right, you can see where it's a little green, um, this walkway stop area. The town currently has proposed a weather mitigation, a weathered area for there, so this would impact that, and we have to work with the town to keep the flood wall out of that project. Another option again, we bring the flood wall closer, to not affect basketball courts and minimally affect the playground. So if we were to design, we start from the location of the flood wall. Again, just ideas and maps, which is something where it would like, and then in the corner there, which you have continually raised platform, so there's, there's things that we could do further down from the beginning to design. Again, street view. The next location we did was South Harbor. So from here, you can see the gray line. This is not something that's going to happen at private properties, the residents, so this is just an example. But again, the flood wall for the community center in South Harbor, it's back up against the building on the deck, and so you can access it from the parking lot there. You can, you can factor mine as a beach here. Just another area view. Again, we did not look at how private residents will access beyond the flood wall. That's going to be the next stage, so do not take this apart. Yes, I know, we all know that, but we're not at that stage yet, so once we get to the next phase, we would have to, homeowners figure that out. The ground, because this location maximizes the beachfront. Uh, so another option is moving the flood wall closer to the water, so this is about the halfway though. Area view, ground view. And just another option for location, it's an empty place. So some examples here. Uh, this is just a few typical options, you guys have this, you have this in the thing already. Water from access examples, that's a little all the way over the flood wall there, you have some beach buildings and walkways outdoor, so all the, all the public beaches would have access to them, not beach cut off, we would devise some type of walkway around and set it over that. Over the picture. Flood wall examples, the three on the right are from Fort Mon. So that was under construction on the top level, and then the one on the right is actually from today. This is what the Fort Mon flood wall looks like. The two on the left are from Greenbrook, not local, less. You can see on the bottom, that's what the flood wall looks like on a dry condition, flood wall on the top, it did, uh, it kept the water out from that warehouse facility. Uh, road gate, road closure gates, again, this is a Fort Mon example, this is what we're considering for Highlands. Basically, it stays open 90, 90 cents a time, there's an operation meeting scheduled when the storm comes. It's closed, it's just a manual closure. Then once the storm passes, it opens up again. Some of the interior drainage structures we're looking at, so the bottom ones are top right are docked structures, so when water is saturated, water can't go back into the pipe, water will come out based on pressure. Uh, the top left is where the flood is flat. So again, water cannot get in the pipe, or water can't out the pipe when it's coming down. The bottom right is a pump station. These pump stations can be steadily designed to fit this mold of the town. They don't have to be, they can be cedar shapes, so maybe we're in that footprint as well, not hazardous and eligible, or not used for floods. So where we are in the next steps, so we're currently in PET, pre-construction engineering design. That is where the first constructible element, which is a flood closure gate, across May Avenue at Better's Park. We're currently getting rights of entry to do children's graphics survey and utility surveys, so we can actively pick how high we have to be, so the flood wall can be at plus 14 and anything deep. It's hard to say how high that is on earth without knowing height of the ground level. So that's currently where we are now, some basic data collection. Uh, that's going to take the data collection, the time, to by year. And then the construction of that floodgate, flood quarter gate, it's about a year, year and a half. And then as PET comes to completion, we'll work with the New York DEP to, with the product for construction, so that will basically move us into the construction phase. The construction phase of the remainder of the project will take about approximately four years, and will be done in a range. So each of the region, each of the Highlands will be done in a range, so maybe it will be easier. And during the design and construction, we will work with the homeowners and the town for access. There's not going to be a way to say, hey, this will be it, that's not how we work. The project costs, so this current phase is 100% federally funded, we got $2.4 million in supplemental funding to complete this phase. The construction phase is estimated right now, which is subject to change, $229 million, and then this caution, $65,35, that Rob had explained earlier. Project contracts, mayor, myself, Eric Doyle, who's not here. Again, this will be on the website, so you can download this information as well. And feel free to reach out to anyone. Thank you. So I'm going to open it up to questions for about a half hour.
If you could just give us your name and address, so the clerk can.
My number one question is, why are we still talking about this? Seven years ago, whatever it was, we determined that if someone planned, just looking at the same plans, would be somehow maybe the flood piece is the same, the town voted that it did not want it, resolution was the same.
The town did not vote. The resolution is right here, I'm just.
This voting is a form of vote, whether the residents or others.
Okay, there was no formal vote on the ballot. The residents that were in the room gave a vote, but the other 3,500 voters did not. What we are doing is, we are going to put this on the ballot at this November's presidential election, where all registered voters will be able to vote.
And if it's voted no, what happens?
Then it won't happen.
So my earlier comment from years ago was that this property that is indefinitely does not support other supposing, at least 80% of the property is privately owned, I would estimate, so unless you plan to do that in the domain of 80% of that property, it won't happen. And where your number one initiative goal on the first week was remain, retain access to the water here, and it's in there, which is that that's key to the. Those plans absolutely cut off access to the water, not just. Those plans absolutely cut off access to the water, not just in a general way, but literally to where people would not even be able to swim in the water without going over a cement wall. I don't understand how this is even, quite honestly. And I'm not clear on the town's portion of the cost. I know previously there was a big portion of the cost of construction, but regardless of the construction maintenance from there on in. And it seems that the town did not, and probably still does not, have the money for that. It would be great if we could maintain what we already have, i.e. the bulkhead, which was redone and is already back to basically rusting away and the concrete's cracked. And that project runs well over 10 years ago for the flood valve from just a rainstorm. Some of those pictures were just a rainstorm, not from the river flooding. It's just a rainstorm because we don't have proper drainage. And that project's been being talked about for well over 10 years, at least, and isn't ever. But why are you not focused on these things versus something that is not even feasible?
Hang on, hang on. We actually have had a list that was given to the clerk ever since we noticed this meeting, that I just want to quickly go through some of these questions as well. And I will also answer your questions. Um, I know, um, uh, that Bob and Bethany went through this, but I, I will make it, I hopefully, more clear. Um, in that of, of the cost of this project, which is on this piece of paper, is in $2020. So you would need to multiply a dollar twenty to these costs to get the adjustment for inflation. The, uh, you know, the, I know it's, it's confusing. 75% is this and 25% is that and 65 is this and whatever. So I'm just going to give you a number. And that number is adjusted, uh, for inflation. And that is Highlands' number in $2024 is over $13 million, which is more than we raised in taxes in one year. How that even becomes a feasible number to throw a rock at, I'm not certain of this. This is not the, that, the council's been trying to work with the Army Corps and with D E P to make things more feasible. But this is not our plan. We didn't come up with it. Like I said, this all started in 1990 with players who are not here, not in the room. In fact, from 2017, there are only myself, Jason, and our attorney, Brian Shaberek, are even still at this table. Um, I, and I agree with you, it hasn't really changed much, but it has changed. Uh, there are some folks that, that want this, there's some folks that don't want this. This is, um, again, adjusted for inflation. This is over $156 million that is going to affect half of the 2,800 households that we have in this town of roughly over 5,000 people. It seems quite a bit of dollar per capita, uh, for an area that demands commercial fishing, other things. We hear you. We just wanted to get everything together, put together this presentation. I will make sure that these dollars and cents are put out in a very readable way so that you don't have to sit here and do math about what's, what's 25% of this, 35% of the cost share from whatever. I understand it and I'm, I'm sure that we can put this all out in a way that's a lot more, uh, easily digestible. Uh, I do want to get to some of these questions, and if I can't get them, I will pass them to whoever. Will you provide us a sufficient notice of how many and which pieces of properties are going to be impacted by eminent domain prior to any votes or decisions? I believe that's in a prior PowerPoint. All of those properties that, um, that line the shoreline from pretty much not inclusive of One Willow to, um, all the way to Veterans Park. So it's pretty much every, every property that is on the water in that area.
Yes.
Easy, I like easy answers.
We would work with all the properties to determine access, access to peers, access to the water.
He talked about 10 buck a half.
Hang, hang on, hang on. We're, we're going to go through this first and then you'll have a chance. We just want to...
So yes, we, there's a lot of credit cards. We know that. We would work with you to make sure your access. It may be different access for what you're looking at now, but change is not necessarily bad. So just, you have to think about communities. What is your community? How does your community stay? Your future kids, did you bring it? Are you going to have a community left? So think about that too, not just, well, I'm not going to be able to swim off of my bulkhead where you don't really swim now. Most of them are the beaches.
If, it, guys, if we could just please, hang on. If we could just please remain respectful of each other. Everyone will have a chance, but we have to let other people speak. And if you're, if you're busy speaking, then we can't hear the question nor the answer. Okay? We can do this. Uh, the next one is, I'm a homeowner and a taxpayer, but it's not my permanent home. How do I make my voice here heard? You write in and you come to the meeting and you tell us your story and that's how you make your voice heard. And you encourage your, um, your neighbors to hear your voice and try to get them to carry up your, their cause. Will taxes go up now or over time to maintain the wall? I'm not going to lie to you, that's a yes. Is Army Corps funding 100% of the project? No, we already explained that with the weird math that I will explain in a much simpler fashion. Is the town responsible for any additional cost for the projects? I don't know what additional cost this person's referring to, so I really can't answer that question unless I know what the additional cost is. General maintenance is, uh, is... If you want to, I don't know what those percentages are. Do they still have that 7525?
Uh, that's, that would be a community state, but once the project is constructed, we hand it over to the state and you, you have to operate it.
So there is going to be a cost, we just don't know what that cost is. Would that be fair?
Yeah, Mayor, I think that would be fair. We'd have to negotiate. We would have to negotiate that with you as part of our state aid agreement. But normally it is 7525.
Seventy five, okay. So, what... Okay, next one is, will the wall ever be managed slash maintained by the town, county, or the state? And how is that funded? Rob? Maintenance is from the state?
That is still also to be...
To be determined.
Oh, Mayor, I'm so sorry. When we were talking, you were so right on 75, 35, 65, 35. I'm so sorry. It would be borne by the town for O and M. I apologize.
On the town for O and M. And do we even have a rough idea of what that number is?
Not at this stage.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Um, hang on, hang on one second, let me just, uh... 16. Will the town carry additional insurance? And how would that be funded? All of our insurance goes through the JIF, which is called the Joint Insurance Fund, where, um, many towns and counties band together to get lower insurance rates. Uh, as to what something's going to cost, I can't answer that question. I don't know what my insurance bill is going to be next year on my house. I, I can't answer it. I'll give this one to our attorney. If a lawsuit was brought up involving the wall, who is responsible for court cost, lawyer cost, and any awarded payments? How will that be funded?
That's determinative of whether the, uh, Army Corps and D E P would defend and indemnify the town in any such suits. And I'd ask the D E P that.
That is correct.
Okay.
Yeah, I can hear it.
Is your microphone?
That's determinative by whether the Army Corps and/or the D E P would defend and indemnify the town. In other words, they would cover the cost of any such litigation. I'd ask the D E P, D E P that question, and they may not know the answer right now.
Yeah, I believe, and I could be correct if I'm wrong, but I believe typically we do not identify, um, anybody as part of the project.
Okay, uh, the next question is, will Highlands need to hire staff and workers to manage the wall? If so, how will that be funded? And that would be funded through taxes. The town forced the homeowners to raise their home. The town did not force homeowners to raise their home. FEMA and your flood insurance company did that. Um, and moved public buildings to higher ground. We did do that. How, what do we gain from a wall? Uh, we gain, I would imagine, wave action, uh, that's, uh, coming from the bay.
Well, yeah, you see, we get protected from the wave, wave action. But also we protect cars. We protect the, um, the homeowners that cannot raise, the apartment owners that cannot raise, the businesses that cannot raise, on the protective infrastructure, on the relief. So we protect the community as well, not just the property.
Okay, and the last question that is town slash D E P, um, specific is, how do you put value on the loss of a community from a wall? A, the parks and beaches will no longer have a water view. B, the beaches will become obsolete. C, restaurants, businesses will be impacted. So much income is derived from visitors to our restaurants and bars who comes for the views and the atmosphere. Um, valuation is a very tricky thing. There's got to be at least 20 ways to value property. Um, but I don't know if, uh, Rob, is there anything specifically from D E P that you have that you generally use in these types of projects?
Uh, it's similar to what you said in that it does vary from property to property as far as the valuation process that would be done as part of the easement acquisition phase. Um, so each property is different and we cannot give a general sense on what that number would, would it be on a property by property basis at this point?
Okay. So, um, some of these other questions that are not highlighted in the blue?
The last few questions?
Sorry?
The last few questions will shoot from the box right here.
Oh, okay. Um, but for the first and second pages that you've had for some time, um, like, what is the annual maintenance? We already answered that one.
Uh, the 25 below?
Yes.
Mayor, do you want them to answer those questions?
Yes, please.
Before you go right on...
Because these, these questions might answer a question that you already have. So we have already had it here. People wrote in their questions ahead of time so that we could prepare for answers. Uh, so...
I just want to back up just a little bit about why we're here.
Yep.
Um, Army Corps, we don't choose our projects. Congress authorizes us and funds us to do projects. The reason that you were chosen for projects from back in the 90s on was based on storm events and the federal government coming in here, FEMA, and spending money here. And there was a time when the town wanted us to come and see what we could do, comprehensive solution. I was here for the history. Um, and it is true, the town council voted to stop the study at one point, then rescinded it and want us to complete the study, not commit the town to anything for that. And why we're back now is because Congress came out with the new infrastructure bills and it's based on, you know, congressional decisions. Uh, this is, I believe this is the only town in the state of New Jersey that turned down a Sandy project. I'm not saying you're right or wrong, but Congress saw that, saw an opportunity for funding. There are some people in the town who want this project, some people who don't. But that's why we're here. And we're here to give a comprehensive, large-scale solution. Doesn't mean you have to accept it. We're giving you an, an, an option. You have a choice for the future. You're going to adapt to the flooding or you're going to, you could adapt to a project. And we're not here to sway you one way or the other. We're just here to give you the answer on what a comprehensive solution by the federal government looks like. Thank you.
Do you want me to run through these, rest of these questions then?
I cannot, yeah, you can do 26 and below, but like, yeah.
Okay, 26 and below. For Gravely Point Beach and Road, what are the structural and non-structural plans?
I'm sorry, Gravely Point, after the flood wall goes up to them, where we have, where on it are the houses, so you have your beach property, so beach, the beach is not affected. We bring the flood wall inland as much as possible. So there are no structural plans, um, subjects to religious plan into this fall, um, structural.
So that's a...
Structural modification, and we don't have to do that.
So it's a flood wall with a gate, with a gate? Or is it a walkover? To be determined, okay. Um, this is asking for the timeline, when we've already given you the timeline. Uh, what happened? Well, they're asking what's the next, uh, what's the next step? And like I said, it's this meeting, uh, we'll likely have another meeting. Um, I believe that's in, uh, maybe September? And then, uh, this will be updated again with your feedback from tonight. A lot of this is specifically, specific to Gravely. Shockingly so. Um, that is a private beach as well as a private road. Um, is that also being considered for eminent domain? Um, well, any, any eminent domain, there is just compensation? That is correct?
I'm sorry, Mayor. Just to, just to be clear, um, we start off seeking voluntary easements for our project. And our goal is to show that the project provides, uh, sufficient storm damage reduction value to where the, the compensation is little to, to a none because of the, of the value afforded by the project itself. So that's, that's usually where we start in the, in the process, to seek a voluntary easement. And then after that, if the owner rejects that, that offer, then, then we, then we go to the next phase, which would be the condemnation phase.
Okay. Um, and this compensation portion is done by, is that the three? Is that the town, the D E P and, um, Army Corps?
So the real estate process, the real estate acquisition process will be handed over to the town to run. Um, the town would be in charge of doing the title work, the surveys. Borough attorney, outside attorney, however, is managed. Um, if a declaration of taking is filed, the, um, the property owner, in most cases, would obtain their own lawyer and/or their own appraisal and would present that. There is a negotiation phase that has to take place, good faith negotiation, in which we hope that that would satisfy everyone, um, and that would take care of the process. If it does not, then once the declaration of taking and that process is complete, the property, the easement, the property does have the easement on it. And then the just compensation part, which is either still continued negotiations or eventually, hopefully not court, uh, would take place after the easement is already obtained.
Okay, and then this, this next question comes right on to dovetail on that. Say, what if the property owner disagrees with the amount of compensation? And that's a negotiation and attorneys and, uh... Ooh, here's a big one. Is it possible for the project to move forward without Gravely Point Road and Beach? Accepting that out of the project? No, the answer is no. Okay, then I'll turn the white questions back over to you. Hang on, we just need to get through this.
I'm going to go to the audience.
That's ridiculous.
Final questions.
Just state your name and address.
Robert Davis, 68 South Bay Avenue, Highlands. Uh, at previous meetings, we talked about beach erosion, falls by the wall, and who would be responsible for, uh, the beach once that happens? We were testimony to people from other towns that when they built this wall, every time you get a storm, it comes in and rots the beach and takes it away. And now we're no longer going to have access to maintain the beach. So there was a question about who then would be responsible for the replenishment of the sand and those type of things?
Currently where we have the flood wall, where we, in the water, very close to the waters, where you already have a heart structure like a bulkhead. The area where you have your main beach at Snug Harbor, we have the flood wall pulled back. So the erosion rates there are not gonna change with or without our project. When you have Hurricane Sandy, you had the town come in, inundate all the beaches and then go out. It'd be the same thing with or without our wall there. We don't have walls right in the water. In, in, unless it's a spot that already has a flood, a bulkhead. So you already have that hard structure. But we are doing our best for the, the beaches here in Miller Street to pull it back where we're trying to leave as much, um, of the beach open as possible.
But if, uh, but if we do get a storm and it erodes the beach away, we'll do, we'll bounce off the wall. Now it'd be very, very difficult to replenish all the sand that was washed away. That's what we heard from people where this same project has happened in other towns. And so that's, you know, some of my concern.
Yeah, I'm not sure what towns you're, you're talking about. Um, I'm, I'm focusing here on Snug Harbor Avenue Beach. And where we have the wall alignment here, whether our project's there or not, it won't change the erosion rate. Doesn't mean you're not gonna have erosion from a large storm event. You're gonna have it with or without our wall in that place.
I have just one other quick question too. Uh, so we chose to run the wall across, uh, across the park and it seems like that, that three restaurants and 12 homes subject to further damage once that water follows the rim of that wall. Particularly, you know, the two marinas there, Chubby Pickle and 12 homes on South Bay, uh, which are in the same flood as everything else and at the same height and now in the path of the turn of the wall. Was that considered at all?
Yeah, in, in tidal flooding, the, the floodwater is gonna find its height, its elevation. In a riverine system, that's true. At a riverine system, it'll bounce off one wall and flood the other side. In a tidal system, it will find its height. So those areas outside the flood wall are gonna, are gonna flood at that elevation, whatever the surge comes in. It's not, it's not gonna increase based on what we-- Right, they were left unprotected because the analysis didn't justify us, um, going around it. We, we did an analysis during the study phase of where we could tie off the high ground and we weren't able to justify going around that far.
We have to do a benefit cost ratio for, um, each of these, for, for the projects. So all the alternatives that were considered and the locations of them, we have to do a benefit cost analysis, which ending above one is a viable project, people don't wanna start a viable project. So having that property to the south here, um, it did make a viable project. Also, that's why they're, that's why they were not included.
Uh, Tommy Strackler, Gravely Point. Um, can you just explain what's this flood wall gonna be made of?
Uh, what's it gonna be made of?
Mm-hmm.
Uh, right now we have it in concrete.
Okay, so, does concrete cement dilute the air? The cement industry is one of the most polluting industries in the world. It's responsible for almost 10% of global carbon dioxide emissions. It also produces a variety of other pollutants, including sulfur dioxide, nitrogen oxides, and particulate matter, okay? So right there, there's a problem with the environment, all right? There's also sea life. This is a sand tidal town. These waters have sand because there's low tide and it goes up to high tide. There are sea life that lives in the sand. There, we, let's see what we have. Oh, we have crabs, clams, scallops, um, sandal, starfish, worms, insects, and the big fish, even sharks, small sharks, sand sharks, they feed off of the sand. They feed off of the fish and the sea life. You're gonna build a wall which is gonna stop the rise from low to high tide and the fish is gonna be trapped in front of the wall. The other thing is, I just drove up here, I've never been up this high before. Are you gonna have somebody sibber there to let the water out when it comes down hills when there's a thunderstorm? Think about that. New Rochelle, Iowa, my three kids went there for penny fairways. Two professors were killed last year in the same type of area in New Rochelle that has hills and water with a wall. You know why? Because they died in their car, drowned, because of the water from the hills. I hope you guys are prepared for a big action. You've gotta come better prepared. You're showing beautiful photos of the wall, distance away, blue skies and clouds in the background. Come on, that's not reality. Mother Nature will find a way. It'll find a way to get over that wall.
Yes.
There's tornadoes in Florida right now. We just had an earthquake here. What are we gonna do? Build a bubble? God, let me finish my thought.
Okay. Tommy, we hear you, you've made your point, but you just gotta calm down.
I, I told you it's gonna be more short, explain it. You have to understand something, that it'll find a way. It's like a light from Jurassic Park. You can't mess with life and you can't mess with Mother Nature. Just look in all the places. They built seawalls, they built those canals, they did this, they built that. Tornadoes happen, we get them here on the wall, there's, there's scrouds. What is going in? The best part about it is we got to 9/11 and we were strong. And we got to Sandy and we rebuilt our town. We're just booming right now. Then we had the pandemic. Now we're after pandemic, we're still doing good. We have to, that's what makes us stronger. Let Mother Nature, we raised the homes 10 feet, whatever, for you. Now you wanna build an 8-foot wall? So it becomes old, oh, don't worry, the homes are 2 feet high, it'll run like this.
Okay, but wait, you, you didn't raise your home for me, you raised your home for you. By your insurance company, not by the town. That was FEMA. Hang on, hang on. Thank you, Tommy. Where'd that microphone go? Oh, he's got it.
To Washington. Um, is this a full or nothing deal? Um, or can some of this money be allocated in some of the problem areas? Just, just maybe some of the problem areas or pump station or stringing out drainage issues? Does it have to be full or nothing or gonna be set?
So the authorized project does the whole rain, flood wall, pump stations, the, um, drainage pump and hills that come down. Um, if we were to change the authorized project, we have to go back to the study. So we would lose the funding that we have now. Um, we have to go back to get it reauthorized to study the man, um, to be different. We are working with the town in reference to what you're doing, um, for the interior. So it's not necessarily full or nothing, but we don't wanna sort of, it's a long, continuous process.
Two quick questions, um, I don't think, I don't think, uh, two quick questions.
If you could, please, it makes it, it makes it easier for the clerk when she's doing minutes.
Mike Markenny, 38, Baltimore. Uh, two quick questions. In the initial phase, they had said that this wall, and I don't think it changed that much, would not protect us against a sandy level event. Is that still correct?
Um, during the study phase, we didn't design it to a storm event. We designed it to most cost-effective for, um, statistical future storm events. Now, this flood wall is at elevation 14. Sandy came in at elevation between 11 and 12, correct? In Keansburg, we built a flood project there in the 60s, also elevation 14. Sandy did not overtop those flood walls. Now, we can't say that that Keansburg project with the design to 190-year storm event, which Sandy was, it, that, because you have to have a little bit of factor of safety there in the elevation of the flood wall. But it got very close to the top of the flood wall in Keansburg, but did not, did not overtop it. So had the flood wall been here during Sandy, you would have very, very few damages compared to what you, what happened here.
Second, second quick question, uh, is based on the design, the way it is and the height of the wall and like looked at it like Snug Harbor has already the existing bulkhead there, would there be any road in Highlands where you could drive or walk down and see the water from ground level walking or driving? Is there any place in Highlands you'd be able to see the water from the road?
Probably not, there would be like, we can have it in Snug Harbor.
Completely cut off the views--
The height, speed above ground, or if it's 6 feet above ground, it's 8 feet above ground, depending on the location.
Correct, so it would completely cut off the views for every visitor in town who comes here unless they elevate themselves somehow, is that correct?
So for the 7th day, I think, I think that I missed a second. Your presentation showed Snug Harbor, something that it was about. Where's all the information about the stuff? The vastness of fire that, um, also the walls you're talking about. You just mentioned something about the water coming down. Where is all this other information? Your presentation, you just walked. And I want to ask you this, what if all the water comes up on the ground? What's sand, it's down from the hill, why is it really, very small, very small? Also, it comes up, I'm sure like water, it's my wall.
All the information from the feasibility report is bound on line. It's not what we know, we have to be willing. Uh, so the project, which I had all the details. Uh, so the flooding from the rainwater, I think we were just talking about. The town has a grant that we're looking for here and this project also includes here that totally has some of the problems.
So Bethany, if I might, I just don't wanna skirt over that issue. There is a storm water, interior storm water component to this. You saw a pump station that was up on that preliminary plan that's on there, right? The pump station is supposed to take the interior water, get it outside the wall so that you're not, as that gentleman was saying, flooded behind the wall. That's not the intent of the project. But I, I don't want to just skate over the brick grant that Highlands just got. It's a very significant grant. Congratulations to you all for getting this grant, but it's to manage your interior storm system. And I know I see your engineer, municipal engineer over there. If you have any questions, you should really ask because I'm hopeful that the Corps will recognize the system that Colliers is planning on installing or designing and incorporate that into this project. So I think, and I hope, and very hopeful, based on this grant and what the Corps had provided before in their plan, that your interior storm water drainage will be managed sufficiently that nobody is stuck behind a wall. I understand that. And I understand that you're looking for more than two areas. Bethany mentioned that this is going to be constructed in phases. It's going to be designed in phases as well. So we're trying to give the overall image of what this project will look like without having all of those features designed 100%. And that's why you're only seeing those two main portions, which is what we were asked to kind of emphasize, to take care of most of the public questions about it. But I understand that you're still left with what happens to me and it's going to be designed at a later point and that's why we don't have that right now.
This is a tree now, right? People are talking about walls by, um, Gravely Point, but some, some things I haven't done that, right?
Well, so there's a line on a map, right? That's-- So that is what the-- Yeah, so that's what the project is, is that line on the plan. What that looks like when you go and stand on one of those features, that's the give and take that Bethany was speaking about earlier.
Okay, so that's the wall. So down to the town of Portland Road and Markenny has a bunch of properties down in Abana. I have a question, um, was there ever a statistic that says how much damage was caused by Hurricane Sandy, it was a billion dollars, versus how and how much cleanup paid that versus the cost of constructing the wall? Just to, to see if the whole entire town was wiped down, right? The cost they came, of course, the whole entire town was wiped down, and which it virtually was, just a cost comparison. So people can put in their mind, is it worth it to build a wall? Or what are, what are we doing? Are we just gonna rebuild again if everything's totally wiped down?
Yeah, in the feasibility study, we did have to do a pretty robust cost-benefit analysis. And we didn't, we don't take just one storm event and compare that to the project for construction. We take, uh, 50-year period of analysis. So we take historical data that we have for as long as we have it and project out the same pattern, um, of storm events in the future 50 years. How much will that cause in damages based on what's happened in past events versus the cost of the project? And the benefit cost ratio has to be above one. I think it was more than two in this case. Um, so yeah, the damages, the, the, the federal government's spending more recovering from storm events here than the cost of a project. That's why we were funded for this solution.
Uh, just to go a little bit further on that, the housing stock that was, uh, generally the majority in lower Highlands were poorly constructed, old, uh, fishing cottages and, uh, and mobile homes, bungalows, uh, a lot of, um, ranch-style one floor, you know, one floor. And, uh, the housing stock that's in Highlands now, where the majority of them, I would say the majority by now, probably about 70% of homes are lifted on either enclosed concrete block or they're on piers or they're on, um, uh, like, I've got con, like concrete piers. There's, what was once, I mean, look at, look at Gravely Point. What was once a little bungalow is now a three-story home that's 14 feet BFE. So you, you can't really compare the, what was there to what is now because it's vastly improved. Um, she's been waiting. Oh, do you still have it? She's in the back, okay. Go ahead.
Michael Redmore, round here for me. Has anyone thought about, so I grew up in the San Diego hometown and 48 years old, graduated 400 years on that same river, always on the border, always fishing. I have literally watched the environment here get so healthy to the point of every year, even if we don't fish, you see my house, I'll come. Tons of meat fish, worth reaching tuna, less than 300 is on shore. I'm sure you see pictures of beautiful, looking, yeah. It's not because of their fish, it's because the workers are helping every time they have the opportunity to go into my backyard. Has anyone thought about this wall? Even the construction of it, that would run off all material, dirt and dating that wall, the crease, so everything into that water, what it's gonna do initially when they're building it and then affecting the tidal flow, changing the environment. Once again, some, a build like this could change the whole entire fishing ecology. So has anyone thought of that part and also not having, you know, access? It's, it's a pretty big deal. Is there anyone other part of the project here? You are. Do you have to report some word of all the changes like that would do? Cause I could give you a couple examples, I've come back the way, I mean, there's a people arena and nothing against it right here in town. Uh, one where like, in the arena, Eddie Road, their beach, uh, it's totally changed. That whole area over by a wall.
I am, you asked who was from the DEP and we are. I just would like the first part of the answer to go to the Court. Did all the research on the feasibility study, on the constructability--
Or speak into a microphone.
Oh, so sorry, so sorry. I kept hearing this one, I thought you could hear me. I appreciate it. You asked for a DEP rep, I'm not punting it, will come back to us, but I would like the Court to at least discuss some of the work they did during the feasibility and the selection of materials, why they selected it. But I will also tell you that we were building these projects up and down the coast. Uh, we were building them in Hoboken, we were building them in Union, uh, Union Beach. We're building these projects, um, and we're doing them clean, organized, cleaning up after ourselves, letting them harden and keep moving. We build them in sections. Can you hear me? Okay, you still can't hear me?
You have to turn it up and put it right in front of your mouth.
All right, how's that? Better?
Yes.
I'm the only one that could hear me. We are building these in Hoboken. We are building these in Union Beach. We are building these types of materials up and down our coast and along the whole eastern coast. We, we know how to build them, we know how to build them cleanly, organized. The contractors are gonna be hired by the Corps. They're gonna make sure they're building them cleanly, quickly, in sections, making sure they're doing everything they're supposed to do to protect the environment and building to protocols that the Corps has written into their specifications. We, as the DEP, as the non-federal sponsor, also have a representative on site, making sure the Corps is doing what they're promising. So we can report back to the Mayor, what's being built, how it's being built. But I'm also gonna tell you, the town actually has an obligation here. The town, it, on some of my projects, is the best eyeballs. I'm seeing a little dust. We get a complaint, immediately we're starting to react to what's the contractor doing? We're going to check on it. Um, it happened just yesterday in Hoboken, um, and they called our liaison officer, told us there was a little dust. Within hours, we were addressing it. I'm just saying, this is what we're doing. We build these projects, we're putting about $600 million in infrastructure like this on the ground right now to protect the state. to protect the state from our next future storm. This is, I'm, the town here, this is your moment for us to listen. And that's what I'm doing tonight. But I will leave you with, this is an amazing opportunity that's fully funded, that should be considered as we move forward. The opportunity should not be overlooked. This is going to be a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity for this type of project here that's fully funded and the Corps is committed to building. The state of New Jersey has committed $33 million to this project as well. And it's budgeted through our Shore Protection Fund for future expenditures. I know 13 million sounds like a lot. It is a lot. But it's also going to be expended over time as it's installed. It's going to take a long time to build. And so it's just, it's not a one-time, one-shot. I'm not planning on laying out $33 million in one day. I'm going to, I'm going to lay it out in sections as the Corps needs it in order to bid their projects. I'm going to hang around after the meeting if anybody's never met me before. But I'd love to talk to some of you individually. But I want to go back to Bethany and let her maybe give a, things I might have missed just now.
So I'm just going to have my project biologist, Matthew Wozniak. Sorry. Talk about the NEPA process that looked at all those concerns that you had brought up and what you had brought up as well.
Hi. So all federal projects have to go through an environmental analysis and called the NEPA analysis. In that report that you can see up there, it'll go through all types of plants and animals. So we looked at reptiles, fish, invertebrates, things that are in the sand. And all of that was analyzed into what type of impacts this wall will have on it, the whole project will have on it. Our, our analysis showed that there would be very minimal impacts and those impacts would be temporary, such as during, while constructing, there might be clouding of the, of the water, of the shoreline. But those are temporary impacts and they'll be minimized to the best possible. Any construction that happens will have some kind of a barrier to stop any more sediment going out into the, into the ocean. But if you want to look at that report, you'll be able to find analysis of all different kinds of species and what the impact was.
Thank you. Thank you.
Hi. This is Ocean Management, Jeanne Skidgill. I've been in this town 60 years. I can honestly say there's a few areas in this town that have flooded partly. Not the whole town. And I believe if the maintenance through the town, where those areas which were getting the problem solved through this sewer, okay, you could correct it by that, that...
The brick grant, yes.
Water coming down the hill, yes.
Certainly.
Water down the hill, maybe Miller Street, maybe the sewer is, you know, not flushed or maintained.
It's totally different. Sanitary sewer is completely different than storm water.
Okay, so then Snug Harbor, right? Yes, that's wood. When water rises, right? The wood, the water seeps through the wood. Maybe correction by the VFW, that area floods. And that could be corrected through something simple.
And that's what we're doing with this large brick grant that we got for over $12 million.
We need this big wall through this whole town that is a fishing town. This sounds like a very commercialized project. And maybe it should be put in Sandy Hook where this problem started, when the surge, surge, he's trust, okay? Put it in Sandy Hook. Go after the state. You work for the state, go after the state. Keep it out of New Jersey.
Okay, thanks, Jeanne. She's coming, she's coming.
Patty Headland, surprise. The reason we purchased the house is because we want to see the water, swim in the water, we love the water.
Oh, sorry. We love the water, we want to see the water. We don't want to see a wall. The people that live on the water, most of them, they lived in their houses. They built bulkheads that cost over $100,000. They're not flooded. So when I looked at this program, I have to live on the water. You have the wall, both of you are yours. Why, why? And why would it, if it ever had to be, why would it be built but behind a bulkhead? Why you have to have these walls blocking your things that we can't even see? Why people came to live here? It doesn't make any sense.
I just want to...
We have never flooded.
I just want to...
We have never flooded. We bought the house right before Sandy and now this, yes, the house was ruined. We lived at the house, built the wall, and we never flooded. My neighbor had said, my neighbor had said, to stay up for the news attention, her mom lived here for 100 years, her family lived there. They, our area never flooded and we're on the water. And she said, make sure you say that. Everybody doesn't come up this way, comes the other way, and you build the wall.
I just want to reiterate...
Why would you build something behind a bulkhead instead of through a door?
Well, first, each reach, we're going to look at individually and determine exactly where to line it.
You already drew it.
No, no, that's preliminary. We're only fully funded right now to do the Veterans Park area, which is really where we dig in, see what's underground, see what the uses are and try to work different solutions. Separately, to answer your question and address the other question there, during Sandy, the town flooded up to Shore Drive. And full disclosure, I grew up on 50 C Drift Avenue. I was here in 1992 and we had water in our living room. I understand the flooding here. I grew up here, graduated high school here. This town floods. I'm not telling you, you need this project. But if you don't have this project, you're going to have to adapt to those large-scale flooding events. You may have not flooded since you lived here, but it flooded me... Bethany mentioned earlier that this project is not just for those structures that are elevated, it's for the cars, for the roads, for the infrastructure, for the businesses, for the apartments, and for those houses that are not elevated.
For the community, not just the individual. Cars, people, basically, if they know that there's a problem, if they live low, they...
But they're not going to drive them up the wall.
Why? Well, that's not it here.
The point is... We probably won't, once we get closer.
So we just haven't gotten to that design phase yet. That's the phase meters on the road that will work with you for the alignment next to your progress.
Hopefully not. Hopefully, if you...
John Malcos, we own several property in the town. I have a couple of questions. The wall that you want for each of the towns, the whole town, or behind the wall?
I could not hear your, I could not hear your question.
He asked if the flood wall would go in front of the bulkhead or behind the existing bulkhead. And that kind of depends. Sometimes we might remove a bulkhead and put the flood wall in its place. In other cases, we might drive piles just outside an existing flood wall and take out the other flood wall, the old bulkhead at grade. But that doesn't mean that that's where our flood wall is going in each and every property. We haven't...
People have replaced the bulkhead in this town. I just heard it, which costs hundreds and hundreds of thousands of dollars. Now you either want to take them out right in front of them. If you go in front of them, there's going to be a void between the bulkhead and the wall.
No, if we, if we go in front of a bulkhead on the water side of a bulkhead, we wouldn't leave the old bulkhead there. And we would only go right in front of it, right adjacent to it.
You're going to go flush to it?
Flush to it and then it would be cut at grade normally or removed.
No, it would still...
No, it'd be removed. It would be removed if there are voids.
Another question I have to hear from here, flood insurance? Do we still need flood insurance?
That's a question for FEMA and your insurance companies.
That was back to the last time I was here. We should add any...
That's a FEMA answer. I can tell you FEMA is not going to give anybody an answer without a project in place. They don't analyze that until after the conditions have changed.
I'm Zelensky on 68th Quarter Road. I'm glad the slide is up here because I look at this and I see, you know, in the future, this could be definite problems in the Highlands if we don't do something. In the past 600 years, it's different than what's happened now in the environment, we're seeing glaciers melt in the, you know, 20,000 years ago, glaciers melted and raised sea level. Unless it hasn't happened now, but we are now at a different time. We have sea level rising and look at the map, I'm just love. And, you know, if there's a point here where the water can come through, it will. And, you know, as our speaker said, I think the Highlands is the only town that initially turned down the stuff. Again, now we took that back and we're considering it. But, you know, FEMA came in, helped the town. If we're able to help ourselves when we have $130 million on the table from the federal government, when our cost will be, I don't know, $10 million, whatever. Again, do you think the federal government will step up and say, I want you to help again? If you're not able to step up and help yourself, will you save yourself?
I think it's great advice.
Guys, if you want to speak amongst yourselves, then you're free to do that outside of this meeting. Okay?
Hi, Patty Headland, just one quick, Johnny, you chose the wall around the park and that is a concern also. I'm just thinking, like, children that are in there, if they fall, if they get hurt, kids that hang out there at night, you can't even see them that far. Having the wall surrounding them just seems like it's an unsafe situation.
I have raised that issue with the police chief. Tommy, please, you've had a lot to say and there are people that have not had anything to say yet.
How much is that, my, just the interior water?
This is just a whole, whole, the better, this map is not going to come out with a little water coming out of the back.
Oh, okay, okay, sorry.
I'm from Central West. I hear all of the issues and everyone has a very personal issue, property by property. And as you move through this economy, I know, we got to understand that sea levels are rising and we do get some of this flooding. It's going to be a mess. Is there an opportunity to sit down, neighborhood by neighborhood, sort of like a charrette, and work with the property owners? What would be acceptable? Whether it be deployable walls, or going to a lower design like in some areas that it needs to be. But basically, put everything on the table and get it keep that because every neighborhood is sitting. You can go every two blocks in this town, character of the shoreline. And I think that's really what has to be done. For every kind of reach of plan of any type that could be acceptable, it has to go individual by individual, neighborhood by neighborhood.
The point is, we're not designing the wall. I'm not designing the wall. We're designing the wall too.
And that's what I think needs to happen is sort of, you know, neighborhood by neighborhood, sit down and not, you know, it can't be a long plan for the, for acceptance of every property.
We've just been waiting for it in the back.
Yeah. Oh, you just missed him.
Well, I can't write, if you can see this. I've been in Highlands for 71 years and I've seen a lot of storms. And, and even, wouldn't stand aside, I've seen a lot of very, very, very vessels rush up on the shore. And this angry wall with that star post, it's a void in one reach. And next thing you know, the whole town is in a, a bad time. So angry wall with that star post on the market. And I've seen it time and time again, very, very, very vessels hit. Just broke away from their warnings and they've gone screaming and an angry wall with that star post. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Mary, I'm from Congress, I'm from Long Island. I just have a question to the council. I'm also the president of the Republican Association and all of my community is on that. What are the goals? You know, that argument about what is on the ballot? Are we going to continue this? Are we going to have this? Are we going for the next phase of...
It has not been written yet. It has not been written yet.
Will there be a chance of a problem?
Absolutely. Every single council meeting from now until August, I think we have to have it in there. So by July. And we would, this would be a resolution. So when, just like we did for regionalization last year, we made a resolution and you said, this is what we're going to put on the ballot if it gets accepted by the Commissioner of Education. The council's resolution was not accepted by the commissioner, but the school boards was. And they did the same thing. They published it. You have to have a public meeting. You have to have public input, just like this. And then you make a resolution and then we vote on the resolution and then it gets put on, goes to the county clerk and then it gets put on the ballot. All that needs to happen before the end of July. So it's not like it's going to sneak up on you. You know it's going to be there because we're going to tell you as soon as we get it together. That's why we're doing the meeting now in May so we could start, have a couple of months to work out wording, how it's going to work and all of those fine details before anything is sent to the clerk.
Are they closing the gates if there's a noriscur? They do develop? Absolutely.
I would imagine, yes.
Absolutely. We would close the storm gates based on large-scale storm events. Sometimes you could go years without them. Sometimes you could have four in a year. I mean, that's all part of the operation and maintenance and there's a manual for that that's all determined later down the road. But it's already occurring in Keansburg and has been since the 60s.
Okay, please.
John Clark, I see 48-4 Beach Boulevard. I have two questions. One, I don't quite understand how you do it phases. Because if the wall is, doesn't kind of look tan, then it seems like there's just holes in your ground. So how can you design one phase and then go to another phase? And if you have a problem, then don't develop it because it works. Okay, the other thing is, you had a picture of...
Keep the microphone close to your face, we could hear you.
I had a picture of the, by the energy center.
Mm-hmm.
Can you turn that back up?
Eric, yep. Back, there you go, perfect.
Okay, so you said like, that's kind of done or...
This is just an idea.
Okay, so if you go all the way up to the right?
This is, don't even look at this.
Yeah, so that's all private property?
Yes, this is...
And private beaches? And you just take those private beaches?
Don't even look at that. Look at this alignment right here.
But that's also a private beach.
You're only showing us, yeah, 15% of the whole project. I was telling us not to look at five of them.
Correct. We were told to do a...
Trying to show us just the best part.
Snug Harbor Beach and Better Park. Not an individual problem. We can't do a reverberant, a 80 problem. Maybe go home together, similar. But for right now, it was just Snug Harbor here. Please do not look at this. And that's going to be finally...
I'm sorry, I couldn't look at this. You guys... First of all, you have to go right across the beach. And you're saying, well, okay, well, maybe it won't be there. So that means you're going to use a right up to my deck. If I was sitting like that, what would happen?
I'm agreeing. No, here, next.
No, I, I'm all...
We don't know where this alignment is going to be.
Are you sorry?
I don't know where this alignment is going to be. I have not sat down to figure that out. But there will be a line. There will be some, we want to protect it whether it's here, here, or here.
I know. Okay, how about this, it seems like we're, uh, we're devolving here, so, um, why don't we, uh, why don't we just stop for now? Uh, Dave, you want to close us out? Because we haven't heard from a Marina owner.
I can't hear you, Dave.
Okay, all the way close to your mouth.
Don't look at this, we're not sure, maybe, but this is kind of complicated. You're saying it's complicated, I think that's a complicated requirement, so this is a complicated requirement on the board. That's my next question, so I'm only going to ask you a little bit of that. Do you need to answer this?
I know you're, you're looking at me, I don't know, Bethany, if you want to do it, but again, you know, this is all going to be designed, it's the phasing, right? It's the phasing that everybody's not quite happy with because everything is kind of what you just said, possibly going up to your deck, possibly going C word up your deck. But those are the finite details that have not, this is the global overall, and then we have to get into the finite details. And it's just not going to be able to be done unless it's done in phases. It's not ideal for everybody sitting out there, I understand that, but that's why we, we... So, the plan is the flood wall, right? If you go into there, you'll see the different, the, the T flood wall that's going in place. The, the part that we don't have comprehensively is where it sits on block one, lot one. That's what we're all questioning here. Where, what, where does it sit and what does that look like for me? Right. I mean, I would, I would say for anybody who's adjacent to this area, if you have your flood elevation certificate and it is in NAVD, you're going to have your base floor elevation, you're going to have your first floor, maybe even your second floor, those are the, those are the elevations that you're going to need to use. So, when you're, if your first floor elevation is a plus 13 NAVD, this wall is at a plus 14 NAVD. That means if you're tall and sitting tall, you'll see over it, um, maybe a very short child won't. So, that's what you need to think of when you're thinking of these things.
There's not one place that, that a six foot man will see a wall.
Are we going? Bronlin?
Um, my, um, I just have two questions. One of them was I needed to get something reiterated. Um, I heard the gentleman, second gentleman, our attorney, uh, said something about drilling on, at Bradley Point, did I hear? Um, no, there's no drilling, no one?
No.
I think you might heard me say drive sheet piles when we built the flood wall, would you have sheet piles and concrete cap over them? That may be what you heard.
Oh, okay, because I thought a resident in Old Bradley said what's still on there, okay, very good, I just couldn't hear. Um, also, my other question was, um, I understand at this point that you made it clear that you're presenting the opportunity for us and it's if we want it or not as a whole community. Um, but since it's also a federal, state and community, did we put the last on it as a community? Do you see in the future that it will be, um, not a question for the feds, just make it happen, the seawall? I mean, is it really a possibility that we'll vote, vote in town and, uh, is there a possibility then in a couple of years, if it's just a, say sorry, it's happening?
No, we work with a non-federal sponsor and the, uh, DEP and the DEP works with the town, you know, so it's a collaborative process. So, if you, you turn it down now, we discuss internally what to do next. It's not likely, if you turn it down, it would be likely that it would not happen, so...
What's that like?
Oh, if you turn it down, the project will not likely happen.
Well, it's the main possibility.
The, the feds can't do it without our sponsors, so we can't...
Well, do the sponsors have the control, or does anyone have control to, um, just, if we shoot it down, to disregard it and just continue further?
No.
The only thing we can leave right now at this point in time is that is not the desire of the state is to have a non-participatory partner.
Okay, so he wants to cooperate with the, uh, I'm sorry, I'm speaking in layman's terms, um, when I ask questions. Um, and I just, if you don't mind, I'll be really quick. Um, I just, uh, the bike, yeah, going from Highlands to Atlantic Highlands, I know some people will want to know, I might put that in your notes, uh, so I'm assuming the wall's going to continue all the way up?
No.
No.
It's, it stops right before One Willow.
Oh, okay, all right, right before One Willow, but it's, isn't that a full note? What's that?
That area purple was redeveloped after Sandy and, and it was filled to elevation above 14. So, the wall's already, um, lower than their ground level.
Where One Willow is, that's a development there.
Bronlin, can, when you're finished, could you hand the microphone to the lady behind you?
Okay, um, I'm just going to make a statement, um, there's been homes here that are 100 years old that had stood for storms. Um, my neighbors did rebuild, he was a newcomer in town and the little cottage did survive , uh, Sandy, pretty beat up, but that was because it wasn't maintained by each generation and lived there so much. And my neighbor here, um, so it can be managed without the seawall. Um, we have in our community, we have a lot of new transplants, I welcome them, uh, I'm a transplant 30 years ago, my, my son was born here at River View and he's a Jersey boy, a Highlander, uh, and he grew up, uh, bringing his wet wagon down to the end of the street, with the fishing pole and the shovels, jumping off the docks, four wheeling, I guess they go four one, I don't think you can do it anymore. But, uh, sailing in the Sandy Hook Bay, which by the way is a nursery, uh, for sea life, we catch babies from the big plant there, uh, needle nose, is it called? Needle nose fish? Okay. Uh, baby sea horse, uh, we found a droid of sea horse, uh, when my son was little on the beach, uh, it's a sanctuary, it's a body of water, um, it's a, it's a nursery for the rest of the sea. Um, and I, if I was to comment with all due respect, I know, um, Bethany, you did say, you know, who will we kill and go to the beach? To go to the beach. Um, we go to the beaches in Highlands to stay away from the big, uh, brat.
Oh, I do too, my kids do, they ride their bikes to Atlantic Highlands, oh yeah.
Yeah, so, um, and I think this Highlands was discovered because people like to get off the ferry, um, put on their flip flops, get out of the brat race, they like that broken, uh, gull boat that's been sitting in the tall grass, uh, that's beat up 30 years, they're sad, and then one kind of beachy, um, hi, I don't know if I can say the right words, but I don't know what to talk about. Okay, so, um, anyway, I just want to mention that, I didn't like that you said, oh, we can, we're not using those beaches, um, we love the town and, very kind of...
God, she's been waiting the whole meeting.
John, yeah, I'm, of course, you can add it. This is a question to the council. If this project gets voted down in November, what is the council's plan B? I'm not talking about the storm runoff, I'm not talking about, uh, any of those projects. I'm talking about flood mitigation. What flood mitigation we see in the future for homeowners downtown if this fails, if anything?
I'm going to point you again to the FEMA brick, uh, project. Uh, our engineer can speak to it more eloquently. It is, uh, about a $6 million project of which, uh, FEMA is giving us $12 million to do. Um, it is, manages, uh, runoff from Monmouth Hills, it management, and other parts of Uptown. It includes, uh, installing a pump station at Snug Harbor. It also includes, um, changing our, a lot of the valves that we use. And, um, Joe, if you want to come and, and speak to it?
Yeah, and it's not even Plan B.
And that's not even Plan B, exactly.
Uh, so, yeah, this other project that we got the FEMA break funding, uh, last year, it's still in pre-approval, so we are in the sort of, our, sort of, review right now, which could take up to a year. Uh, it is in with DEP and with various other entities that we gave them approvals, including the state, uh, because of involved 36 as well. So, that is a ways away as this possibility over here. So, we're working along with Army Corps so that what we do is also acceptable because we would like to need an Army Corps permit to do what we're doing against what leads to the pump station at Snug Harbor. Uh, the goal for that project is to maintain and, uh, basically settle out the water that comes up from the hills and then any of the, you call it the bathtub effect, would be evacuated through various pump stations. So, again, it's a lot of infrastructure improvements, I know that there's already a lot of infrastructure improvements going on, so we need to get all the approvals in place and we also would be impacting community leaders, uh, land, which is what Snug Harbor is, so that requires, we call it, that motion, so we have to get more approvals as well. So, it's a process, uh, and we're, we're working through it. When we get further, we could have the...
I just want to throw in two things that hit me this week. One was that I, I did a lot of research last year to improve my insurance costs and I was all excited because I really got them knocked down, except I got a letter this week telling me they've applied to the state and they're looking for a 22% increase. And I was furious. And then I'm watching television and I, I just looked it up again to make sure that I had the right numbers. Last year alone, there were 28 different catastrophes that cost over a billion dollars to deal with. So, it's something to think about, um, for whatever vulnerability, I'm, I'm here, I'm right down the road on Grand Tor, you know, if it comes that high, I'm sending for NOAA. But, but conceptually, that you, you're carrying insurance and those costs aren't going down because of all of these crazy things that are happening with weather all over the place. So, it's something to think about.
Hang on, hang on, hang on, hang on, please.
And, and in conclusion, between nine, 2015 and now...
Joe, we could do this before we wrap up.
Okay.
This poor woman's been waiting here for an hour and a half.
Yeah, absolutely, I'm so sorry.
I can't hear you.
I can't hear you.
You have to have it right up to your mouth.
Don't bear me, grab my phone. I just have a question about the voting. Many people have secondary homes here, so they don't vote here. Never we pay over $10,000.
Hold it, I can't hear you.
We pay over $10,000 a house, it's where we have a standing what happens? And when you vote, if it's five votes, if it's one house, they get five votes, then how would that work? And when we have a standing?
You, you can't, you can't vote... Well, hang on. You cannot vote unless you're voting at your primary residence.
So, we don't have a standing?
Well, then it's incumbent upon you to speak with your neighbors and other folks that you know in town.
Okay, I just...
Okay. I just want to make sure that we got everyone that has not spoken yet. Yes, there are quite a few.
Um, Patty Sullivan, Bradley Point Road, um, I have a question in regards to your task projects like Cogolkin and maybe Beach, in terms of materials that you use, are approximately going to store them or locate them for your project? And is there a proximity of, um, travel that has to be or is, or is the ability of material you use for projects, how is it stored within the, or the, the project's going on?
It's both, so we do, we do further, we get along with the process, we have a line and we look at the impact of the residential, don't want bars up to the other roadway, I understand that, um, so if you look at, if you look at staging areas, you can count, um, what property they have to store your equipment, which is what's impacted on the road.
And in terms of like a project of our size, what, like approximately, what would you, um, estimate in terms of square footage, in terms of storage of materials that can be?
I don't have an answer from that, I can just ask you. I agree with that, but you have not determined that yet.
And I, and I do think that's something that has to be considered of all residents, so not just the ones on the waterfront, um, that there would be a lot of materials being stored, not one, two, three years, it's going to be 20 years plus, um, that it needs to be considered in terms of how much space is going to be taken up.
Has anyone not spoken that would like to speak?
Uh, Reverend, I'm, 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 our feasibility report is sent to Congress as a document for Congress to decide if they want to invest federal dollars into a project. So it has to be cost-effective. That's why we do the studies that we do.
So we did, what you were talking about, the offshore infrastructure, the navigation, we did look at that during the feasibility case.
Yeah. It was, if the cost alone was, was enormous compared to the amount of damage that are experienced in town.
Is that what we shared by advice from?
Seabright, Monmouth Beach, yeah. You're correct. You're correct, but it still was not even close to cost-effective. If Congress, if Congress authorizes it to pay for it all, we pay for it all, but Congress doesn't authorize it that way, except in rare cases.
Is there anyone that has not asked a question or made a statement that wants to?
I just wanted to say like a...
Can we have your name and address?
I just want to take a link from the borough site to the feasibility, feasibility that it does not work. I'll look into that. So I think most of us would want to look at the study more closely. It did work for me today. I'm just trying. Okay, I'll fix that. I know our website was having issues today, so I'll look into it.
How many years have you been doing this kind of work?
This really isn't...
Wait, wait.
You're doing the law?
I'm a civil engineer by education, also a degree in design engineering. Just in my, like, I grew up in Ocean County, I'm a water, I'm a water girl, beach girl.
Okay, guys, please. I know we've been here together for a while.
Thank you, everybody. Again, if you have our contact information, you can take your job.
Mayor, you closing the public comment?
Sorry?
You're closing public comment and then motion to adjourn.
Yes. I'm going to end public comment now. Before we adjourn this meeting, does anyone here at the table have anything else they'd want to add?
Honestly, just thank you for coming out. I know everybody is walking out of the room right now. I know it takes a lot of time to come out and you feel like you're talking to a brick wall over here. We do hear your comments. We will respond to any other comments that come in via email.
And this will be on the website, so you'll have access to everybody's email addresses. Thanks for coming out, everyone. I make a motion to adjourn. Second, aye.